Carolyn, are we ready?
We can hear you. Ready when you are.
Very good.
Very good, very good, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, who are present, and all of you attending virtually, good evening. Thank you for attending. The Department of Transportation, we'd like to welcome you to this public hearing for the State Road A1A Atlantic Avenue Safety Improvements. My name is Gene Verano, I'm the department's project manager. This public hearing is relative to state project number 443-512-1. Here with me tonight is Mark Bertencini from BHP. He is here in person, as well Ryan Raddell from BHP, he is here in person, he is the engineer representative of the project. Carolyn Kixler from Quest Corporation Public Information Specialists, she is attending virtually. She may break in at some point if we, if you're in front, you'll hear your left. Amy Sermons, professional engineer with BHP, she is here in person. Nikki Melendez down here on the left, and from BHP is here in person. Tim Wardens, who is in line two from BHP. And Amanda Johnson, she was out front, she's also from BHP, she's attending in person. We're aware about this time that there are city and county elected officials and staff personnel from city and county, not just Long Beach, but Long Beach itself as well. So the purpose of this project is to rehabilitate the asphalt pavement in the entire project limit from Millsap Road to Granada Boulevard, which is at Route 40. As well, constructing a raised median and installing pedestrian mid-block crossings through the State Road A1A. The purpose of the public hearing is to share information to the general public about the proposed improvements. And this public hearing also serves as an official forum to give you the opportunity to express your opinions and concerns about this project. We're not going to play a presentation for you, after the presentation, I'll be back to help you through the rest of the public hearing process.
Thank you, Gene. My name is Amy Sermons, so I'm going to go through some housekeeping slides first. As Gene mentioned, we have some folks that are attending online, as well as by phone. So I'd like to go through all that for all the folks attending. So before we get started with the presentation, I want to provide a quick run-through through, sorry, a quick run-through of the many ways to participate in this hearing. For those of you joining on a computer, tablet, or mobile device using GoToWebinar, I'd like to show you how to access the webinar options. To access the control panel on a desktop, click the small arrow on the top of the toolbar on the top right of your screen. If you are on a mobile device, tap on the screen to display the control panel. Once that is open, the control panel enables you to use the question box or download a project file. If viewing on a tablet or mobile device, the control panel icons drop down at the top of your screen. The products we have available for download include the comment form and project information handout. To download a project file using a desktop, select the file using the control panel, and the file will begin to download in a separate window. If you are viewing on a tablet or mobile device, click on the document icon on the top of your screen. This will display the files available for download. Click the download icon to the right of the file name to download a project file. At the conclusion of this presentation, attendees who wish to make a verbal comment will be given an opportunity to do so. For those using a desktop, use the question pane on the control panel to enter your name and request to speak. If you would like to speak and are using the GoToWebinar on your mobile device, click the question mark on the control panel to enter your name and request to speak. Written comments may also be submitted using the question box. For those of you participating by phone-in only and not logged in using the GoToWebinar, you are attending in listen-only mode. To make a comment, please call the project manager, Gene Verano, at 386-943-5145, or email at gene.varano@dot.state.flo.us. The project files and this presentation are available for download at the project website at cflroads.com-project/443-512-1. If you are not able to access the project website, please contact the project manager, Gene Verano. So now we will start the official public hearing. I'd like to welcome you to the Access Management Public Hearing for the State Road A1A, also known as Atlantic Avenue Safety Improvements Project. The purpose of this public hearing is to share information about the State Road A1A Access Management Project. This public hearing also serves as an official forum to give you the opportunity to express your opinions and concerns about the project. Your comments can be received in two ways, written and verbally. Each method of submitting a comment carries equal weight. Written comments can be submitted using the project comment form or the virtual meeting question pane, as was discussed. Comment forms are available for download during the webinar and at the registration table for the in-person hearing attendees. At the conclusion of this presentation, attendees who wish to make a verbal comment will be given an opportunity to do so. For those attending virtually, use the question pane to enter your name and request to speak. For those attending at the in-person hearing location, please hand your speaker's card to any staff member present. Written responses will be provided to all verbal and written comments following the public hearing comment period, which closes on December 14th, 2020. This hearing is being recorded, and the recording will be made available after the hearing. This public hearing is being held in accordance with Section 339.155 Florida statutes, Section 339.199 Florida statutes, Section 120.525 Florida statutes, and Section 286.011 Florida statutes. This public hearing was advertised consistent with federal and state requirements, and is being conducted consistent with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990. This hearing is being conducted without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Persons wishing to express their concerns relative to FDOT compliance with Title VI may do so by contacting Jennifer Smith, FDOT District 5 Coordinator, by mail at 719 South Woodland Boulevard, Delante, Florida 32720, or by phone at 386-943-5367, or by email at jennifer.smith2@dot.state.flo.us. Persons wishing to express their concerns relative to FDOT compliance with Title VI may also contact Jacqueline Paramore, FDOT Center Office Coordinator, by mail at 605 Swanee Street, Tallahassee, Florida 32399, by phone at 850-414-4753, or by email at jacqueline.pamore@dot.state.flo.us. The State Road A1A project is located in Ormond Beach in Volusia County, Florida. The project begins at Millsap Road and continues north to Granada Boulevard, also known as State Road 40, for a total project length of 1.6 miles. The improvements for this project include resurfacing the roadway throughout the project limits, constructing raised medians, and providing pedestrian mid-block crossings to support the surrounding land use. These improvements require access management changes to the roadway that will reduce the number of vehicle conflict points and improve overall safety.
Thank you, Amy. This section of roadway consists of five lanes, two lanes in each direction with a two-way center turn lane. There are raised medians in some locations. The speed limit is posted at 35 miles per hour, and this is a designated evacuation route. The area along the corridor is made up of numerous condominiums and hotels, mainly along the east side of the road. The majority of the residential area lies on the west side of A1A, mixed in with restaurants and shopping area. There are beach access points throughout the project limits, along with public parking. Driving is allowed on this section of the beach, and access ramps are located at Millsap Road, Cardinal Drive, and Granada Boulevard. With these area amenities comes a number of residents and visitors crossing A1A to get to the beach and other destinations. This map shows the locations of existing mid-block crossings and medians on State Road A1A in Volusia County. There are 16 mid-block crossings on State Road A1A, and three segments of roadway where medians have been built. The basic principle of access management is to limit the number of conflict points along the roadway by minimizing the number of driveways and restricting certain movements at some intersections. Conflict points are places where two vehicles could cross paths and potentially collide. At a full median opening along a two-lane roadway, there are as many as 18 conflict points. Each conflict point is at a location where a crash can occur. Adjusting the median opening to a two-way directional median reduces conflict points to four. Reducing conflict points helps decrease the frequency and severity of crashes, thus increasing safety for the motorists. Section 335.199 Florida statutes requires a public hearing whenever access management changes are proposed. These include modification, addition, or closure of existing median openings, intersections, or interchanges. The proposed improvements for this project include an access management class change from Access Class VI to Access Class V. Access Class VI refers to roads that have no median restricting left turns, while Access Class V refers to roads that have medians with required minimum distances between median openings, as shown in the table on this slide. There are two proposed full median openings, both signalized, and there are 11 proposed directional openings for a total of 14 median openings within the project limits. Access management rule under the Florida Administrative Code 14-97 requirements were utilized to determine median opening locations. I will now do a full walkthrough of the improvements. Please take the opportunity tonight to review the new access locations and provide your comments for the public hearing record. Beginning at the south end of the project at Millsap Road, the existing two-way left turn lane will be repurposed with a grass median and a designated left turn lane, similar to the existing median along State Road A1A itself of the project. Directional median openings will be provided at Millsap Road and Grand Drive for northbound and southbound traffic. Sidewalk and curb ramps along the corridor will be reconstructed to meet the guidelines and standards of the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADAE. Continuing north, the existing two-way left turn, excuse me, two-way left turn lane will continue to be replaced with a raised median, providing designated left turn storage. The existing signal at Cardinal Drive will remain. A directional median opening will be provided between North Shore Drive and Florida Avenue for northbound and southbound traffic. Reconstruction of sidewalk and curb ramps continue north along the corridor where needed. The installation of a raised median and reconstruction of sidewalk and curb ramps continue north along the corridor. A directional median opening will be provided at River Beach Drive accommodating northbound and left, northbound left turns and U-turns. A directional median opening will also be provided at Rockefeller Drive for northbound and southbound traffic. Industrial mid-block crossings will be installed at River Beach Drive and at Rockefeller Drive. Raised median and reconstruction of sidewalk and curb ramps continue along the north corridor.
The microphone's dead.
Sure, let me come down there.
For those on the webinar, we've lost our audio in-house, so give us one second, please.
Continuing, the raised median and reconstruction of sidewalk and curb ramps continue along the north, continue north along the corridor. A directional median opening will be provided at the Aleki Plaza in Plaid's Fall Properties, northbound and southbound traffic. At Arlington Way, pedestrian mid-block crossing and directional median opening will be provided for northbound and southbound traffic. North of Ormond Parkway, the existing raised median will be modified to provide a directional median opening at Ormond Parkway for northbound traffic, a southbound directional median opening at Seminole Avenue, and a directional median opening at Osceola Avenue for northbound and southbound traffic. Pedestrian mid-block crossings will be installed at Seminole Avenue and Osceola Avenue. Reconstruction of sidewalk and curb ramps continue north along the corridor where needed. North of Boss Farin Drive, the existing two-way left turn lane will be repurposed with raised median to the end of the project limits. At Boss Avrane Drive, a pedestrian mid-block crossing and directional median opening will be provided accommodating northbound and southbound traffic. The directional median opening will also be provided at Binding Court for northbound and southbound traffic. Reconstruction of northbound and south, reconstruction of sidewalk and curb ramps also continue to the north endpoint of the project limits. The existing signal at Granada Boulevard will remain. A full view of the design plans is available for download on the project website. Summarizing the improvements along the corridor, raised medians will be constructed throughout the project limits with directional median openings. There are 12 directional median openings planned along the project, the two signalized intersections at Cardinal Drive and Granada Boulevard will remain. Six pedestrian mid-block crossings will be included along with this access management project. These pedestrian crossings are located at River Creek Beach Drive, Rockefeller Drive, Arlington Way, Seminole Avenue, Osceola Avenue, and at Boss Avrane Drive. Each pedestrian and mid-block crossing will be equipped with rectangular rapid flashing beacons, also referred to as RRFBs. It is the law to stop pedestrians in a crosswalk. To help bring further awareness to pedestrians crossing State Road A1A, rectangular rapid flashing beacons are being installed at the six new mid-block crossings along this project. Pedestrians, press a button to activate the signal, and amber lights will flash to alert drivers that pedestrian is crossing. Drivers and cyclists should slow down and be prepared to stop for anyone in the crosswalk. Pedestrians should always make sure drivers see you first and stop before you step into the roadway. For more information about RRFBs and other safety strategies, please visit alerttodayflorida.com. This is an example rendering of what one of the pedestrian mid-block crossings could look like once installed. This example is shown at the River Beach Drive intersection. The large icons on this slide are examples of signs that would be installed on each side of the mid-block crossing. Due to the proposed improvements being constructed entirely within the existing roadway right-of-way, there is no right-of-way acquisition associated with this project.
The current schedule of this project anticipates plans will be completed in spring 2021, and construction is planned to begin in fall 2021. The cost for construction is estimated at $3.3 million. There are several ways that you can get involved and provide feedback on this project. Public testimony will begin immediately following this presentation. Public testimony can be given virtually from home or at the microphone for attendees at the in-person hearing location. For those attending virtually, if you have not already done so, please use the question pane to enter your name and request to speak. For those attending at the in-person hearing location, if you have not already, please submit a completed speaker's card to a staff member. For those participating by phone only and not logged in using the GoToWebinar, you are attending in listen-only mode. To make a comment, please call the project manager, Gene Verano, at 386-943-5145, You can also submit written comments. For those attending virtually, written comments can be submitted using the virtual question page or by downloading the comment form during the webinar. For those attending by phone only, you can also download the comment form from the project website If you are not able to access the project website, please contact the project manager, Gene Verano. Comment forms are also available for attendees at the in-person hearing location. You can submit those comment forms by mail to FDOT project manager, Gene Verano, at 719 South Woodland Boulevard, Mail Station 2-542, Delante, Florida 32720, or by email to gene.varano@dot.state.flo.us. Or if you are attending the in-person hearing location, you can drop your comments in the drop box at the registration table. While comments, while comments are always welcome, written comments received or postmarked no later than December 14th, 2020 will become part of the public record for this public hearing. Each method of submitting a comment carries equal weight. This hearing is being recorded, and the recording will be made, will be made available on the project website This presentation and a role plot of the design improvements are also available for download on the project website. A recording of this hearing will be uploaded to the site within a week of the hearing. This website is maintained by FDOT to keep the public informed of ongoing and future projects. You are encouraged to visit this website for updates regarding the status of this project. For additional information, please contact FDOT project manager, Gene Verano, or the project consultant, Mark Bertencini, at the information provided. This contact information is also provided on the public hearing handout. Thank you for attending this presentation regarding the State Road A1A Atlantic Avenue Access Management Project. Yes, thank you, Gene.
Yes, sir, we can still hear you.
So, ladies and gentlemen, we gave you the whole presentation. They handed us that we're available out front, so why don't you pick them up? This is the same information, it's available at centralpartniers.com. We have lots of opportunity to go and contact me, and the department's talk, and everybody's here, and all of that. Mark is up there, we have to talk with you, now questions, okay? The next part of the presentation is to collect your comments. It's not necessarily designed to be a question and answer session. This is just one of the comment cards, just don't, we have a limited amount of time in the hall. But I assure you, this speaker card, we're gonna, we're gonna take your comment right here, right now. We're gonna take the people that are in person first with these speaker cards. After that, then we're gonna take those people that are attending virtually, we can do it by phone, we can do it here, we'll take their comments as well. This piece of paper is on the side, and it's meant to be tri-folded, put a stamp on it, it's already addressed to me. Okay? Feel free, if you're supporting the project, send it to us, we're gonna hear that. If you're not supporting the project, you have a question, you send it to me. It's my job to use the experts that I have, professional engineers, planners. We'll give you an answer, okay? And I take that very seriously. You take the time, you show your concern, we'll give you that back, alright? If you'd like to make a statement regarding proposed improvements, you have an opportunity to do so. If you're not registered to speak, you can do so now. If anybody care for a speaker card? Nikki will be around, or Ryan will start collecting those for you. If you all like, and you'd like to speak, we'll start collecting those. Again, for the people that are online, there's the chat box, there's an opportunity to raise your hand. We have people, experts, that are paying attention. And again, we're gonna take care of the in-house speaker first, then we're gonna give the people that are online. You'd rather provide a written statement, you may use some of the written statements. If it is submitted, it is public hearing, you don't have to come up here and speak through the microphone, you can just send us a written statement. You're still gonna get the same response either way, okay? We do have to draw some sort of line with Sam. We're asking for these written comments to come to us by December 14th. If we just leave it too open-ended, we'll never get to the end of the project, okay? That was our one mistake for tonight, that was a little feedback, one-time feedback, we can't control that. Alright, so Carolyn, getting an indication that they can't hear online, is it because my volume is too low?
Yes, if you could speak a little bit louder, that would be helpful. Also, just as a reminder, for anybody who is going to provide their verbal comment this evening, if you could please state your name and address before you speak, that would be greatly appreciated, thank you.
As such, I will try and speak a little louder. I'm actually gonna give the first comment on our guest microphone, let's make sure that it's working, Carolyn. This is me back, Ryan, would you mind, please? Ryan will test our guest microphone.
Hey, Gene, this is Ryan, I have a comment, can you hear me?
That's coming through loud and clear, thank you.
Perfect, perfect. I think we've, I think we've covered some of the protocol, let's go to our comment cards. Have we collected? Thank you. Has everyone that has still had a speaker card in person had it collected, so I can put it into the stack? Joe Hughes, Mr. Hughes, are you here? If you'd like to come down and give us your comment, sir?
No, you do not, sir. Okay, should I face this way, or you're not, you're not being videoed, or it's just the microphone?
Okay, we don't have to map up, and I just wanted to discuss, there needs to be Okay, we don't have to map out, but I just wanted to discuss, there needs to be reduce the amount, first of all, we're gonna reduce the ability for people to just make a left to visit a business. And then some people will not, might not want to make that U-turn and go through the traffic or wait for the truck. They're just gonna move on to a different business, maybe further down the next town. We're gonna impact already impacted businesses with this inability to get easily in and out of business, number one. Number two, you've gotta make a U-turn and return back to the business. Now you're impacting already impacted traffic from whatever event, busy weekend. We're now putting twice as many cars now going back on the opposite side of the road. And you gotta wait for an opening to make a left, people are pulling in front of cars, which is already unsafe. And now you're pulling in front of cars and filling those empty gaps when you can't. Now there's fewer gaps to enter the traffic, the traffic's gonna be a nightmare down that street. And as you know, you, you have certain amount of crossings. People don't fall, if, in a real world where people follow the rules, that's crazy. People, pedestrians are not gonna do that. Now they're not gonna be seen by the tree, or birds, or in the scene, there's tons of cars making U-turns in front of other cars. I see this, I'm a tax man in a community, and I don't wanna waste my money on a tax, on something that's gonna be undone on another tax down the road when we realize how stupid this idea was. Just saying, that's my comment, but I hate to see our businesses impacted. This is gonna crush our businesses and our community. I understand, thank you, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Dimitri?
Hello, my name is Dimitri, I own 790 South Atlantic, right across the street from Leander Wanda Park. I do understand safety issues because I had one of my bartenders actually give CPR to a guy when he had a got hit coming down the road on my street there, on A18. And the problem that was is he came across from the park where there's already some grassy, dull area and the dark out. Because we have turtle season, and we can't have lights on our streets and everything else. Now, if you put more stuff up and down on A18, how much more visible is that person coming across gonna be? And how many people do you think are actually going to go in the middle of the street to cross? Does that make sense? I mean, I don't know if we're drawing all this up, but nobody came and asked any of the business owners, well, we need to create more businesses so we can pay more tax dollars. That's what you should be doing, not dividing us to where we can't see what's happening across the street or park. The people cannot now not come across the street to give money to the businesses. They're gonna go, well, I gotta go off about a half a mile before I turn around and come back to park. Does that make any sense? Or they're gonna leave their car, their car parked in the park and then walk across, and then somebody else can't come and use that parking spot when they're already done being at beach. This is not common sense, this is actually, you're turning businesses unless that's what your goal is, that's what your plan is. If that's what your plan, you're gonna do a great job. I mean, I don't know, you didn't ask me, I know I'm a business owner, do you have any, is there anybody else with a business owner here that thinks this is an awesome, great idea?
Into the microphone.
Okay, so if this is such a great idea and they didn't ask any business owners that are here already, then what would you take, or this is, I mean, unless you just wanna spend money, I could use it for the relief while we have COVID, give it to me, I know what to do with that. You guys want some of that money? I mean, I'm just saying. So, I don't wanna get over excited here, but I understand what you're trying to do, you're trying to beautify it. And by beautifying something that's great, wonderful, and it's not really safe. If you really wanted it to be safe, put up real crosswalks at the end of the blocks. That's where crosswalks need to be, that's where people have been trained and brought up all their lives. We're too cross, two crosswalks at the end of blocks, not in the middle of the block, at the end of the block. Does that make sense?
Okay, I understand.
So, I mean, I don't know what else to tell you. If you guys, if you guys ever reach out and say, let me call Restaurant Row and figure out what they would like over there, or these hotels, what would it be more feasible to help you guys out? That's what the planning department, the city ordinance is supposed to be doing, is to come into the businesses and help us out. And that's not helping us out, I can tell you that right now. Anyway, that's all I need to say, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Dimitri. Maybe you have the time to clarify for Dimitri. This project is not including any landscaping, the grass mediums, parking vehicles, it's all on grass. There's no landscape component to this project. And the project is a safety improvement to, you know, correct some crash-causing features. Again, we have crash histories, and these improvements of these raised mediums and these mid-block crossings are countermeasures to those, to those features, okay? Again, this is not a landscaping project, this isn't a business, this isn't a business development project, this is a safety project. We're using Federal Highway Safety Administration Highway Safety Improvement Funds to, to build this project. Mr. Antonio?
Yeah, I'm Samuel Antonio, I'm from, we're doing that Ocean Club Capital. We just went to, where we got the crosswalk for, for, for Saturday. For the Saturday process at A18, there's a medium in the middle. I just wondered if that's even necessary, because it prevents us from getting into our board. There is a problem, or there's more of what we have to remove, because of that. Now, that's gonna do damage to their, 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 coming out of their, their, lots of, you know, things.
Well, the, the medium infrastructure is, is about reducing the conflict points. Turning left across five lanes of traffic. Turning left across five lanes of traffic gives you 18 conflict points, 18 opportunities to be involved in an accident just with your motor vehicle. When you add the pedestrians, the bicyclists, and the mass transit, and the commercial vehicles, your conflict points and your opportunities to be involved in an accident go up exponentially. But I understand, I can understand your point.
I can appreciate what you're saying there, but it's gonna prevent, like I say, uh, it's gonna prevent us from getting, uh, again, for years, it hasn't been there, it hasn't been in its prime, why would they wanna change?
Documented crash histories. Yeah, Mr. Antonio on camera, ladies and gentlemen, we're not really in a position to go question and answer for every one of you. We have a limited amount of time and a lot of speaker cards. So your comment will be addressed, I'll address you back, keep your comment card. For all of you that have comment cards, if you'd like a response to the department specifically, there's an opportunity to put a mailing address or an email address. If you give me the way to contact you, I will give you that response. Dimitri, you only gave me your name, so. I'm sorry, excuse me? You're welcome to call me on the phone, I will speak to you directly no matter. Again, this is that form for us to collect that information and we'll respond to you.
Excuse me, Gene?
Yeah, Jessica, we can't hear, online folks can't hear.
Yeah.
Please do not conduct any conversation outside the microphone, because we, if you'd like to make a comment, please come to the microphone and speak loudly so that we, we are recording this hearing and we would like to pick up all the comments.
Lena, last, please.
Hi, my name is Lena, I'm with Tipsy Taco and Restaurant Row. I definitely like that you guys are thinking about our neighborhood and the safety of our residents and clients. I have a couple of things to say. Oh, also, my address is 746 South Atlantic Avenue with Tipsy Taco. I started a, an organization called Restaurant Row and the Emergency Association, and we're all here tonight about this project. The biggest thing that I wanna talk about is, I don't see that there's a turning lane at Constance Leon and Benjamin. So people would have to do a U-turn to come back, and then also, if there's any kind of, it looked like on the map that there was gonna be palm trees, but you said there's not palm trees in the median?
Mm-hmm, there's no one else going to use it.
Oh, okay, I was mistaken. But, so if, so the Constance Leon and Benjamin, that has access to the Beach Village Gift Shop, Go Juice, Tipsy Taco, the PRN and Andoru Office Buildings, and plus all the residents down those streets. So to have to make a U-turn and go all the way around, that's gonna hinder all of our businesses. Plus, we have a very busy intersection there with all of the residents coming in and out all day. So I definitely think that we need to have a turn lane there. And, and there should definitely be a crosswalk at the top of the park, because just having the one crosswalk, people, if you're at the north side of the park, nobody's gonna walk down to come back up, just to cross safely. And people do not cross safely because the crosswalk is in an inconvenient place. So I definitely think about putting a crosswalk at Constance Leon, or at least Millsap, to make sure that people cross the streets safely, because they're not right now. Also, our, our street is very, very dark, and especially this time of year when it's getting dark earlier. People are walking from the hotels to the restaurants in our neighborhood in the dark, and, which is obviously very dangerous. So we need streetlights, some type of lighting, we have to be careful about the streetlights. So I've seen other places do like red lights, or I'm sure there's plenty of different options, but lighting our streets definitely needs to be a priority as well. I think that's all I have, thank you.
Lena, certainly, that was an awful, and if you would care to write all of that onto a log of the car, if you'd look, you've read it into the record, it would be easier for me to get to address each of those for you. By all means, anyone, there's a lot of professional staff here that's intimately familiar with this project. Happy to discuss some of these things with you after we get through this public hearing process, okay? Thank you. Is it George? After George could be Charles, okay?
My name is George Kuzujin, address is 762 South Atlantic Avenue, Beach Village Gift Shop, Inori Beach. Couple of concerns and suggestions I'd like to make. I'll start with the beginning of the project, Millsap Road, like Nina just mentioned, we should have a crosswalk over there. And the problem I see here is, is speed. A lot of the crashes are happening because of fast driving down A18. There's not enough traffic lights to slow down the cars, the vehicles. It has been already fatal accidents, many years ago, I think it was at the corner of Millsap, a vehicle coming out, going southbound from the west side of Millsap, and I've been crossing through the intersections and got fouled by a very fast-moving vehicle driving southbound. So I would recommend, right off the bat, a traffic signal placed at the corner of Millsap and A18 at the north end of that park, along with a crosswalk as well. That's number one. Number two, as Lena mentioned, there's a lot of holes at Benjamin Drive, Constance Leon. Right there would be a bad idea to put a grass median blocking turning going west, towards Benjamin Drive. I would shift this whole beginning of the project just at Benjamin Drive, north of Benjamin Drive, in front of that premier resorts and management office, those are the office. And I would eliminate the turning, the unnecessary turning lane at Run Drive, because that's a dead-end road, there's no access beyond that gift shop, Ocean Club. So that's an unnecessary turning lane, needing lower. It's blocked off, it's gated, it's empty here, there. There's no access anywhere, there's no road going to anywhere. So, the problem is to redesign this at this Millsap Road, definitely a traffic light, then shift this one block more, and then it's in at Benjamin Drive, going more through there. Eliminating that cross turn, that turning lane at Run, that's unnecessary. And the rest seems fine with it. I appreciate that we're looking out for the safety of the people, of the public and the drivers. Also, like Nina mentioned as well, another good point was adding a lot of lighting on A18. It's extremely dark in that area, and in front of the park, it looks dark, it looks scary. A lot of families, I could be saying, yeah, night when it's dark, especially this time of year.
Hi, guys, my name is Charles, I'm from 762 South Atlantic Avenue, Beach Village Gift Shop. I'm pretty much a resident, we've been a lot of members here tonight, Mr. Dimitri. Also, my business started just so, yeah, so, yeah. I feel like kinda missing the facts. Pedestrians have already, a lot of issues crossing this road. By adding mediums and all these left and right turns that we see, it's more of a northbound, southbound. I don't believe it's gonna help the pedestrians that are trying to get to our businesses. At this point, from what I've heard, Millsap Road, everything that has been said is correct. Everything they said is 100% accurate. If we were to put a traffic stop there, I think it would be a lot more beneficial for both pedestrians and both for traffic, I give you that. People, it's hard to see unless you're actually there in business. Beach Village Gift Shop, Dimitri's, and Tipsy Taco, when you're going down those streets, people usually don't follow those feelings. And there's a blind spot between Millsap all the way down to Charlie, where most of the people are following down.
All right, it looks like we're gonna need another wireless microphone, please.
So, yeah, so pretty much, a traffic light, it would be great, because right now, the main traffic that is coming out of, the citizens, the living, there's actually coming from Benjamin Drive. And by blocking that off as well there, I mean, like my business partner was just saying, Run Drive is actually nothing, it's, it's a road, but it needs sometimes, vehicles are back there, which would personally make a left turn or a right turn, almost, what does it have there whatsoever? And the biggest thing is, this is the biggest area in Orma Beach, on Beachside, where all the businesses and restaurants are. I feel like I don't see enough crosswalks for people. I just don't see it, I feel like the medium is only gonna make it hard for people to cross, more scarier. And like Dimitri mentioned, we're raised to cross on the corners. I've never seen anybody having a cross in the middle of anything, especially when there's restaurants there. But most of the restaurants actually stick more toward the north and the east and south. And by looking at this page one, I actually don't see enough crosswalks for people, and I don't see it to be pedestrian-friendly whatsoever.
Okay, Charles, I appreciate your thought. Let's give that a test, please, Nikki?
We could hear a minute ago, but it went out again, I think.
I'm sorry, Carolyn?
I heard Nikki, but then it, then it got quiet.
Yeah, there's nobody talking, no, nobody. Mark light, please. Mark White, please.
Uh, Mark White, 323 South Atlantic Avenue. While I do appreciate the efforts to, uh, make the street safer for pedestrians, I do agree with the previous speakers that a crime number U-turn is a problem, and has caused a big problem, especially during the hot traffic times, special events, weekends. Um, my concern with the project is, uh, the fire department across the street from our house now has limited to no access to the ten or fifteen residences directly across the street. And so I was just wondering, the fire department is going to get the north and service the northern part of the peninsula coming out of there. That's all I have.
Thank you for your questions. Scott, please, please.
Hi, my name's Scott Hanson, uh, with Restaurant Row. And I see a lot of other cases in here, who's in here, is from our area, of A1A. Um, I like what everybody had to say tonight, and I'm for you. Um, Millsap Road would benefit greatly from a crosswalk and a traffic light. Um, because all the cars, the next traffic light up is Cardinal Drive and Harvard. Between there, these cars are able to pick up a lot of speed. There's nothing to slow them down at all. So definitely a traffic light would, uh, be very beneficial. Also, I have the idea of possibly, either a turning lane coming into Benjamin Drive, um, to access not only Tipsy Taco, but Beach Village Gift Shops, um, the Premier Resorts, and more of those. Five different businesses right there, including Go Juice. There's a new, um, there's a new, um, smoothie place right there, in between Tipsy Taco and Beach Village. So that's another business that it all says. I'm also agreeing with the fact that Ren Drive is a dead-end road. So having people do a U-turn there is going to cause more of a traffic, um, backup and could cause accidents. Um, so I really, and Julie has really had to say, I'd like to, uh, leave, like, Dimitri had this thing about possibly acting on you for all of this, Restaurant Row. Uh, I think that would be very beneficial to us and to you. Um, like I said, the majority of us are here. Um, and also, uh, the lighting issue is a huge issue. Um, from May to October, um, is the sea turtle season. But it also doesn't get dark until nine o'clock at night. So during the months, as of, you know, now until then, until May, uh, it gets dark at six o'clock in a lot of restaurants in our area. So if we had some sort of lighting, it was on there at those times, you know, all those people are going out to dinner between six and nine o'clock. And, uh, so that would definitely be a safety issue. Uh, it's scary, very dark down there, people do get hit by cars. And, uh, so the biggest issue is definitely the lighting, um, the crosswalks. I think a street light would be very beneficial on Millsap. And, um, you know, the median right in front of, of all of these businesses from Millsap to Ren Drive, if people kind of northbound are not going to turn around and do a U-turn and come back into these businesses. It's going to affect business greatly. And, uh, so I think the idea of possibly moving that down, you know, to the start of Ren Drive and then to Ren Drive would be a good. I think that's all we have.
One more thing to comment, Phil, stop, if we can, I see we've figured it out.
I have one speaker card, and that is, uh, Tom Nicholson. And generally, we're going to, uh, virtual attendees, um, collecting their comments for the public record. Afterwards, colleagues, professionals, and probably because a lot of the comments, we're about to do that, the casual aftercare, which may endanger some of the students and students. Uh, we have, we have a pool of people.
Uh, yeah, I think we just saw this about twenty-five years ago. We did something like this in the street in front of my house, in Lake Island Beach. Uh, the promise is made, the drawing is made, uh, we, what's promised to you is what we have. Uh, one, that's what it's going to be, that it was ugly sin. Uh, we see these crossings, hand signs of the crossing. We have like fifty to a hundred signs with no landscaping, as you look, you know, I often go down towards the water, and it has multitude of cited is going to really lower the quality of lighting running. And it was always the idea that Orma Beach is better class of location. So it was kind of nice that you could downplay it, make it less dumb.
If not, I can bring that one up, one who's done.
U-turns, we have all of U-turns.
I don't know.
We have one right in front of your turn. And barely, not even ten people stopped a car in the middle of the road and had to back up and turn. This is not helping to make a U-turn. So people end up with, what, eight locations where people are stopping in the road, finding that slow down traffic, that's absolutely terrible. Um, we had promises that there could be U-turns at the intersections. Only they put a nice little sign that said, "No U-turns." And the cops are like, "No, you can take it if you do a U-turn." And after this, he said, "Oh, no, no, don't worry about that. Well, guess what? When you get a ticket for a hundred twenty-five dollars, you really will win." After you, when we look at this, look at your map, those yellow lines is ugly gray cement for like half a project. So it doesn't really enhance the beauty of Orma Beach. It may or may not increase the safety, especially when you have all these cars stopping in the middle of the road. And you have a problem literally crossing around a car. It is extremely rough, it's pat all the time. And I don't think you do it in that situation. So if these people suggested you might have talked with them, I absolutely ask you to have a talk with them and see what their problems are.
All right, thanks, John, for your comments. Before we, uh, go through our vote pool, uh, attendees, uh, you'll be hearing, um, Amy and Caroline. You'll be hearing a couple of my colleagues assisting with, uh, some of these comments coming in virtually. Um, my colleagues and I did, uh, reach out to the A1A corridor, both sides of the road, we emailed you, and, and we offered to have virtual, we had four, virtual meetings of an hour and a half or more. Um, we had some attendance, okay? You've got my number, you've got my email, I'm going to be able to call you. I'm going to save your after this is over. We'll happily go over some of your comments with you. If I have no means, it's the final answer. If you give me an email, or you give me a written, you know, a snail mail or post address to send you a department response to your comment, I will ensure you get that. It will be at a later date. That let the comment period elapse for two weeks. The department will evaluate those comments and formulate those responses. Doesn't come just from me, this is a large group of professionals and experts that will run these responses on behalf of the department to you. Amy, do you have, um, some comments coming in from the virtual?
Hi, Gina's is Caroline, excellent. Uh, we do have one request to speak, um, Joe Hanush. I'm going to unmute you, and you will need to unmute yourself.
All right.
Great, I can hear you, Mr. Hanush. Please state your name and address for us.
Yeah, Joe Hanush, uh, eighty-seven Carrot Creek, Quay. Uh, drive up and down A1A probably about five times a week on average. Uh, the raised medians, I am not in favor of at all. Uh, I think that, you know, the forced U-turns are not a good idea either. Uh, I find it better to, for pedestrians and for, uh, vehicular traffic when the, when there is that wide open, uh, uh, center lane. Uh, what I do like is the, from what I heard from other people, was that traffic, uh, way. The, uh, I don't know if they were, uh, using, they're going to say the rectangular rapid flash beacons or not, or just regular crosswalks. But I think either one would work out good. But, uh, the raised medians really, people are going to run across the, the street anyway. And raising the median there is just going to add more hazard to it uh, for both the cars and for pedestrians. Uh, and plus, if you have the grass or whatever kind of landscaping among those medians too, you have to, uh, increase cost for maintenance. And, uh, you're going to have someone there probably once a week or once every two weeks, uh, just standing right there, human being, next to the road with traffic going by. I think that goes the opposite direction for public safety. So, uh, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Hanush. Um, for those who are joining us virtually, if you would like to make a comment, please type in the question box your name and that you wish to speak. Um, we'll just give it a minute or two, see if there's anyone else online.
Caroline, looks like we have one more. Mark Doust?
Yes, let me unmute him. Okay, Mr. Dow should be able to unmute himself locally and speak, I believe. Mr. Dow, are you able to unmute yourself?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, there we go.
Uh, my name's Mark Doust, I'm a professional engineer, and I am very familiar with, uh, traffic and traffic design. Uh, I have a home at four oh five South Atlantic Avenue, which is just, uh, north of Rockefeller. Um, I've lived on this street my whole life, so I'm very familiar with how it works and operates, and even when it was a two-lane road before it was a four-lane. Uh, I'm certainly in favor of, uh, traffic safety. Uh, and I think you should install the pedestrian crossings where warranted and, and when they're installed, use the, the rapid detectors. Uh, I think I'm very much in favor of that. I have a, a big concern regarding, uh, the U-turn movements that this design, uh, creates. Uh, we're, we're used to roadways that, uh, require a, a lot of traffic controls and, and they force U-turns, uh, we have a lot of those roads. And when, and when we have to resort to those, typically, we have proper median whis, somewhere between twenty-five to thirty feet. So that if someone gets in a turn lane and then they go to actually make a U-turn maneuver, they can complete it. Uh, unfortunately, in this area, we don't, we don't have that. We have a limited, uh, twelve-foot bidirectional lane in the center, at least it looks like about twelve, that we're trying to accomplish the, uh, the traffic management goals with. What happens in this case is that if you get in that lane and you only have the four-foot separator, unless you have a smaller passenger car, most of the time, you cannot complete the U-turn maneuver in one maneuver. For example, it looks like we have about, you know, thirty-six feet outside to outside for the, for the maneuver. And a standard like a F-150 pickup truck takes forty-one feet. So what happens is, you get in that lane and you go to make your left-hand turn, and you wait for a gap, you go to make the turn, and you can't complete it. You end up, uh, nosing the curb, then you're forced to back up and make it kind of a two-point turn. And that adds, I think, significantly to the hazard of that U-turn maneuver. Uh, this is also a, a, a tourist corridor. Uh, we have a lot of larger vehicles. We have vehicles that pull trailers with motorcycles during special events. And this, this road gets very, 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 very busy during those events. So the time, uh, when you try and actually see if you can find a, a large enough gap to do this two-point maneuver i- is very slim. Many times what happens in, and this has happened in other parts of our tourist, uh, community, is people resort to finding the full-access medians. So they, they go, for example, a little about, about a half mile south of me, maybe they would try and use the side streets and come in on Cardinal. So they're just doing a ninety-degree maneuver, not a one-hundred-and-eighty-degree maneuver. The problem with this is now we're forcing what commercial traffic that we used to be able to confine to A1A back into the residential neighborhoods to the west. And I think that creates, you know, problems of its own. So, uh, I, I do have a big problem with the, the four-foot separators. Um, I, again, I'm in favor of, uh, the rapid light crossings, which can be done without all the separators. I think if we had, uh, larger medians, if we were able to have the twenty, the thirty-foot medians like you do down at Bella Plaza, where someone can actually pull into a space and make a comfortable maneuver with the vehicles, I think I would be okay there too. But I think, I think what's going to happen here is you're not going to get the safety benefits you're after because it's really not set up for the vehicular traffic we have to make the U-turns. I think it's going to be, uh, cause a lot of problems. That's my, that's my opinion.
Thank you. We do have, uh, Mr. Hanush would like to make one more quick comment.
Thank you again for letting me speak. I'll be real quick. I just wanted to reiterate that I do agree, uh, with the other, uh, commenters. I just want to say again, I, I saw the three-point-three-million-dollar estimate for this project. I did a Google search for this, and these are for the rapid flashing beacons. They, they're about fifteen to thirty thousand dollars each, and I think there are six of them in the proposal. And even with the other cost in there, i- i- I don't think my estimate got above six hundred thousand dollars. So I'm not sure where the three-point-three-million-dollar figure comes from, but I think it could be done a, a lot cheaper. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I am not seeing any other requests to speak online at this time.
That being said, um, the verbatim recording of this hearing, together with all written materials received as part of the hearing record, and all studies, displays, informational material provided at this hearing, will be made a part of the project record and will be available for public review while requested. I'd like to thank you for attending this public hearing and providing your input into this project. It is now approximately seven twenty. And I hereby officially close this public hearing for this State Road A1A Atlantic Avenue Access Management Project. Thank you again, and I will be leaving.
Thank you, Jane. For those who are attending virtually, um, I will leave the virtual world open for just a few minutes in case you want to download a handout or, or submit a comment in the question box.